Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining me for the October 25th, 2021, Miriam City Council meeting. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Sissom.
Here.
Councilmember Debold.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldol.
Here.
Councilmember Naff.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Here.
Very good. We are going to move to public items this evening. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda are taken as each item is considered. There is a five-minute limit to public comments. And in accordance with governing body rules and regulations, or, I'm sorry, rules or procedure, the city reserves the right to refuse public comments that are personal, impertinent, or slanderous. I have one person that's signed up to speak this evening under public comments. If you weren't aware that we had a sign-up sheet, I will make sure you get that opportunity after we call up Nancy Hupp. Would you please come forward? And I think you know the routine, but just for those who might follow you, I need your name and address for the record.
I'm Nancy Hupp. My new address is 13700 West 90th Place in Lenexa. Not the same as Miriam, but that's the way it is for now.
Yeah.
I'm here because I wanted to make Mayor Sissom aware of the fact that a number of his friends have appreciated very much his years of service to the city of Miriam and have made a contribution to the Miriam Community Center Foundation in your honor.
Oh, I'm honored. Thank you.
And so, once I close the books on that, I will be sure and send you a list of who contributed.
Thank you very much. I'll make sure I reach out to them.
We do appreciate your years of service, and I know that you'll enjoy retirement.
Yeah.
Second item. We want to appreciate Scott Debold for the work that he did and the innovative project that he did for the foundation. I hope you all did receive some information that he took a piece of the flooring from the Tim Murphy Art Gallery up at the old Irene B. French Community Center and made plaques that sit on a desk or shelf honoring Tim Murphy. Scott did that out of the generosity of his heart, and anyone who decided to acquire one of those gave a $10 donation, which went to the foundation. And Scott, to show our appreciation for your work and your dedication to the city, we have placed on the Irene B. French Giving Tree a leaf in your honor. And Mayor Sissom, once I close out the books on your retirement, a leaf in your honor will be placed on the Irene B. French Giving Tree.
Thank you.
So, that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you all.
You're always welcome to come back and see us.
We know I will.
Okay, is there anyone else in the, in the, in the audience who would like to come forward for a public comment? Sir, please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ed Cole, apartment 13, Center for Apartments Down at 10,200 Best 62nd Street. Somebody did some door hanging for Amy Ryder and Bob Pape, who are candidates, and the scuttlebutt in the building has that strong disapproval has been expressed against that door hanging. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Okay. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close out the public items, and we'll move to the consent agenda. We only have one item on the consent agenda this evening, and that's consider approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held October the 11th, 2021. So unless there are any questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion. Pape?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd move the council...
Excuse me. Approve, uh, consent agenda item number one. And do I have a second? Ms. Fudding?
Mayor, second up.
Motion made in second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Naff.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. We're gonna move to the mayor's report, and I have four items on the mayor's report this evening, all dealing with confirmations of reappointment for various positions. Item number one is to confirm the reappointment of Lea Ann McCormick and Cole Stephens to the Planning Commission for the terms expiring December 31st, 2024. Any, any discussion on that item? If not, I'll entertain a motion in a second. Mr. Pape?
Mayor, I'd move the council confirm the reappointment of Lea Ann McCormick and Cole Stephens to the Planning Commission for the terms expiring December 31st to 2024.
And do I have a second? Ms. Yadrich?
Mr. Mayor, second.
Motion made in second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Naff.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. Julie, do you know if Cole's last name is Stevens or Stephens?
I believe it's Stevens.
Okay. I'll make sure. Item number two is confirm the reappointment of Cole Stephens and Joseph Cronawitter to the Board of Zoning Appeals for terms expiring December 31st, 2024. I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Hands?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that the council confirm the reappointment of Cole Stephens and Joseph Cronawitter to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the terms expiring December 31st, 2024.
Ms. Yadrich?
Mr. Mayor, second.
Motion made in second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Naff.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. Item number three is confirm the reappointment of Ruben Cosmier to the Board of Structural Appeals for a term expiring December 31st, 2024. Get a motion? Mr. Neal?
I move that the council confirm the reappointment of Ruben Cosmier to the Board of Structure Appeals for the term expiring December 31st, 2024.
And Ms. Yadrich?
Mr. Mayor, second.
Motion made in second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Naff.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. And last on the mayor's report is confirm the reappointment of Tony Scott, Kathy Stoll, and Stacy Chavetta to the Parks and Recreation Board for a term expiring December 34, 1st, Ms. Hands?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that the council confirm the reappointment of Tony Scott, Kathy Stoll, and Stacy Chavetta to the Parks and Recreation Board for the terms expiring December 31st, 2023.
Ms. Yadrich?
Mr. Mayor, second.
Motion made in second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Naff.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. Next, we're gonna move into council items. Last meeting, we had some discussion about this item, and this comes to a second reading, and that's the consideration of approval of an ordinance regulating food trucks. So are you gonna present anything further, or are you just here for questions? Just here for questions, Mayor. All right. So does anyone need clarification or have additional questions they'd like to ask before we call for a motion? Got it all taken care of last time, sounds like. Well, all right. Well, then I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Yadrich?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve an ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the Miriam Code of Ordinances regulating mobile food vendors.
And Ms. Hands?
Yes, and I'd like to second that.
Motion made in seconded. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Naff.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. Next item is consider approval of a resolution canceling December 26, 2022, city council meeting. We're not gonna cancel the date, just the council meeting. Any discussion about that? Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion in a second. Bob Pape?
Mayor, I'd move the council approve a resolution canceling the December 26, 2022 city council meeting.
Chris Hands?
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Naff.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. Next item, I promise will take more than five minutes, and that's the public art review. Good evening, Temper.
Good evening. Mayor, I know you really wanna savor this last meeting, so I will...
I can't...
I will make it worth your while.
This can't be the record-fastest meeting, okay? This is my last one.
We could do it.
So talk real slow.
Okay. First of all, any questions? No, just kidding. Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, I just wanted to provide you, Jennifer Jones Lacy, Assistant City Administrator, but I wanted to provide you an overview of the public art program that the city of Miriam has undertaken and give you a little history of where we've been and where we're going. And first, to start off, a little bit of background. So this idea for a placemaking and public art committee really came from former council member Todd Boyer. He had attended an NLC meeting, conference, and learned more about placemaking, and the idea was really taken a liking to by the administrators, Phil Lammers, and the council at the time. And they moved forward with creating this committee, which was established in 2013, and that included both residents and council members at the time. And their mission was to enhance Miriam's identity through amenities that integrate our history, values, culture, and geography. And, uh, starting in 2014, the council decided to establish a budget objective, which actually put into place a five-year budget for $565,000 through the CIP to establish public art in the city. And that was kind of the main, I guess, motive that that group decided to use was, in order to build a interesting place in Miriam, was to use public art to place throughout the city. The first three projects were paid for with public art funds from the capital improvement budget, and BASK, which was at the community center, was actually paid for out of that project fund specifically. The final project, which is set to take place in 2022, will be using the balance of those funds that remain in that total budget. First project is Still Time, and this was the first project that was installed in 2016. Total expense is $132,048, so just over the project budget of $130,000. And the artist is Dan McGinn with Draw Architecture. And honestly, I didn't know much about this piece before I started doing research on this project, but when you listen to the explanation of the history of how the artist drew its inspira-, his inspiration, it is really quite interesting that they really tried to incorporate elements of the entire surrounding community. And this is a very busy intersection, and the intention was to create a sense of stillness using this wind chime. And also, they drew a lot of inspiration from the fact that this is our Little Motor City, right? So they created the chime using large pipes that resemble car mufflers, and they thought that the breeze would create this calming musical effect. So it kind of gave, gave a nod to the native culture that existed here in Miriam, and also, the, the pipes were meant to complement train whistles. In fact, I learned this from councilmember Hands, that they were actually tuned by a sound artist to, I guess, complement the train whistles. And they used license plates as some of the clangor to kind of create the noise. So, interesting history there. The second project is planting seeds, and the total project cost is $113,000 here. That was installed in 2017, of course, Miriam Marketplace. The artist is Christopher Weed. He is out of Colorado, and they had these three mirrored spheres to sort of suggest large sprouting seeds. So it was, again, sort of a nod to the fact that this is the Miriam Marketplace. People come here to purchase fresh produce. And they also celebrated the sacrifices that the community and other communities have made, because this is where a lot of the flags for freedom are planted. And as you can see in this image, there's a reflection there, kind of expands upon the notion of freedom and the flags that are represented here in this, in this photo. The third project, installed in 2019, is Hmm, or Hmm. I don't know how to say that. Hmm.
You're gonna need to learn how to say that. Right. There you go. That's for sure.
Total project cost $106,000, and that is, of course, a waterfall park. And the artist is Joshua Weiner. And this project really does speak to the children that enjoy this park. This is, of course, a great playground. A lot of families enjoy it, and so they were kind of catering to, to the family audience and, and all of the kids that, that come by. And the caterpillar is Mistaking the Karn is another caterpillar than Seeing Its Future as a Butterfly. So the Karn provides a nod to Miriam's history. Settling this area and the caterpillar and butterfly represent the transformation that has happened over time. So the fourth and final project that is part of this project budget is the City Hall exterior. So the committee decided that they wanted to contribute the balance of the funds from this $565,000 to making Miriam City Hall a little bit more spectacular from the outside, because you have this beautiful building here at the corner and the community center, and then the art that has adorned those facades. They wanted to make this facade a little bit more striking. And so, we did purchase, or we did already go through the design process with Clark Enerson Partners. So we do have engineered designs in our hands. It was put on hold for a little bit due to COVID and everything that has been going on with that, but we are working, staff is now reviewing those plans, and we're looking to issue an RFP for actual construction the first quarter of next year. So it is budgeted for 2022. And so, the vast majority of this project cost is gonna come from that public art budget. The balance will just come from the CIP budget. And then, of course, last but not least, is BASK. Now, this is at the end because it is not a part of that total $565,000 budget. All of this money for this project came from the community center project budget. So same pot of money, just different source, essentially, or different project plan. Total expense $334,449. That included three sculptures. And the artist is Blessing Hancock, and we hired Designing Local to issue the RFP for artists for this particular selection. And they, they got their inspiration from a lot of the public engagement that they did to correct, collect language from the city and the public, and they wanted to make it more interactive. And so, this project was installed in 2020, and then they got everything, the lighting and all of that, up and running in 2021. So that is the history of our public art project or program. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Maybe I would make a comment that, of the obvious reason why we had this, this presentation was, it's kind of the, the closing of this art project that we started six or seven years ago, and it's a full report of the entire projects. And to let the, the council know that the, the project has officially ended, there are no plans at this point for an additional art project or, or anything like that in the future. That's, that's up to the future council to decide what's appropriate and when that's appropriate, if, if it's appropriate. But just kind of a final report. Anybody have any questions?
I just, I just want to add that the committee who worked on it, we also had some business people on there. They were very dedicated, and, and the committee actually helped with choosing Blessing Hancock to do BASK, even though it wasn't the money that we had been, had, had been dealing with before. I think the committee is very focused individually on how much art can enhance our quality of life. So I certainly hope that going forward, we remember that we were, when we started this, we were trying to raise Miriam's image, and I certainly think that some of our art pieces, more than others, no doubt, definitely have done that. For one thing, it just says we do care. So I, I just think, I, I'm hopeful that it goes on.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. I think Phil Lammers once said that, Phil Lammers once said the purpose for art was to ask, get people to ask questions. I don't know. Make, make criticism as part of that, but we got some of that. But, but by and large, it's been a great project. It was something that...
And I will say that even after he retired, he served as the committee chair. So he, he really was invested in that whole thing.
Yep. All right. Well, thank, thank you for that presentation. We're gonna move next to our monthly finance report. Donna, how are you this evening?
Good, thank you.
Our monthly finance report for September, again, I'm happy to report sales tax revenues continue to come in well. We received our notice of distribution tonight at about 4:30 about what would be our October distribution or our August sales, which wouldn't be included, of course, in the financial report that you got. And again, about a 6% growth over last year and over 2019. For the year, we're up around 20%. Again, I just want to caution you, we know that all of this is great right now. Don't know that this is, this indicates the future and that we will continue at this rate of pace, but this has been quite the year. Our expenditures continue to be within line of what we would anticipate, which is also good news. And so, I would love to answer any questions you might have.
Chris?
Yes, I didn't expect to be first. So my question is, given what we are hearing with heating costs and gasoline prices, what, what did we use as our budgeting, and are we still okay?
Yes.
Going forward for next year?
Yes, I believe that we are. Whenever we did the budget and we're budgeting for fuel cost, what we do is we look at the average amount of gallons that we've used each year, and then we project that out using a per gallon rate. And so, as we did that, we used $3.50 a gallon for gas and $4 a gallon for diesel. So as long as, on average, gases aren't higher than that, and hopefully, they will not be, then we should be fine as far as fuel goes. And, um, on the gas to heat the buildings, we also had a gap in there, and so, unless we see increases over, say, 25 to 30%, we should be fine there as well. So... Thank you. Or we have, you know, just an unseasonably cold winter, which will not happen. No, no. So...
[laughing].
Yes. So, any other questions?
Jason?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, I believe we've moved some of our police units to hybrid. Have you noticed a change in our fuel, vehicle fuel?
Let me. I have not noticed a change, but that isn't something that I look at regularly. Let me get back with you on that, and I'll take a look at that and maybe have Chris put it in the admin report this Friday, because any guess I make will be the wrong one, so...
Does that include your guess on whether it's gonna be a cold winter?
[laughing] I just don't want that to happen, so...
Any other questions? Well, I don't want to place any pressure on you, but, you know, since you've come on board here as our finance director, we've seen these enormous increases, which to me...
I take full credit for it.
To me, that kind of sets the standards and expectations going forward, so that's just me, though. So, no pressure there.
I, I am probably fortunate then that you are not gonna be mayor much longer, because I'm not sure I can maintain it.
Oh, you're not the only one that's told me that, so that's okay.
My suggestion is don't take credit for a increase in sales tax unless you wanna take a credit for decrease in sales tax.
That is true. That is true.
Thank you for all the...
And I don't really take credit for it.
Very good. Community development update. Mr. Dyer?
Dear Mayor, councilmembers, Brian Dyer, community development director, oops. Just a few things to update you on. Ross Dress for Less, we've issued building permit for the renovation of that facility. That's the southern half of the hen house. So once that's completed sometime in the second, third quarter of next year, then that facility, that building will be fully occupied. We are closing down our grants for 2021. We're trying to wrap all those things up so we can close down the books and, and get those all done. So we are really very close to getting that completed. And we're also already transitioning into getting out the information for the grants for 2021. We've already put together some information about that, also updated the applications. We'll be getting them out on the website, getting them available to the public, be working through Ms. Grant and her, having her put out the information out there for that. So we will here very soon be starting getting the information out for folks so they can start making preparations for their applications, particularly the sustainability and the residential exterior grant improvement programs, and so those will, applications will start opening up first, first Monday of January, which I believe is the third. Also, a little bit more information on the grants. Obviously, we talked about the new driveway grant for 2022 and how we would start taking applications in the fall, then working towards doing a bid release in, in early, early to midwinter. We have gotten a number of applications in. We have enough applications now that we think we can easily expend all the funds that have been allocated towards that program. So we've already started looking at the applications, started looking at the different driveways and working on putting together the information we need to go out to bid for that. So we are working hard on that right now. And then the last two, two updates I have is on the Plan Sustainable Places Grant for Miriam Drive. As we all remember, there are two grants for that, the northern half and the, which is in combination with us, Miriam University, the UG Unified Government and Overland Park. Been working on that project. Got first draft of, of the, not the whole plan, but some of the deliverables. I've reviewed that draft, so giving comments back to the consultants at the end of this week. So we'll be taking that, getting, getting all that information together and preparing to go out to their advisory committee, as well as a public meeting later in the year, if not next year. And then for the downtown Miriam grant, we continue to work... And then for the downtown Merriam grant, we continue to work on that. Met with the consultants on that, met with them on Friday, went through some of their ideas and things that they, information they put together based upon the public input they've received and the information they've gathered, particularly in the traffic analysis. So they are working hard on that. Hopefully, first part of November, they will be back meeting again with the advisory committee with some of their recommendations and suggestions. So be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. We have one item under staff items, and that's upcoming city council schedule.
Mayor, I think there's actually a new business item that didn't make it onto the agenda.
Okay.
Defer to the council president.
Mayor, if I could have you assist me in coming down, please. I probably know the mayor the best of most of the people, other than maybe his wife. But I've been with Ken here, Mayor Sisom, for, in my recollection, it's about forty-three years. Okay? And that's a really long time, considering we're only forty-five each. We've known each other most of our lives. But we had kind of parallel careers throughout our service here with the city. Mayor Sisom was, you know, got started in the police department and worked his way through the ranks, retired as the police chief. I, at the same time, was working my way through the ranks in the fire department, retired as the fire chief. So we've kind of worked in parallel in public service for a number of years. During that time, it's been a pleasure knowing him. He's been a coworker, a mentor, and a friend. But we've seen a lot of growth throughout the city. Some of the things that's occurred, you know, that would have been great. He just retired, moved on into the sunset, but he didn't. He wanted to become the mayor. And so he's given us another twelve years, three terms, saw a lot of additional growth in those twelve years that he's been the mayor. Some of those things, and I probably remember them all, but I'll remember a few of them. And that's, we've seen numerous car dealerships come onboard, you know, the Kia, the Infiniti, the Lexus, the Audi, Nissan, Toyota, a lot of dealerships. And we've also seen an Ikea, which we can see right off these windows here, come into the city of Merriam, Hobby Lobby, and we have our own McDonald's now. We arrived once we got that McDonald's. But those are some of the things that's occurred. Well, when he came into office, we were generating about six million dollars in sales tax. Currently today, we are generating twelve million in sales tax. That's a pretty impressive, you know, amount of increase itself, with all the things that's happened. That obviously allows us to keep the mill rate levy down, you know, flat, hasn't been raised during his tenure. So those are some of the things that's been going on. We've had, you know, a quarter cent sales tax increase that was passed through, that the voters put through, that allowed us to build that beautiful community center that we have next door. You know, that's one of the things, again, priority is leadership, that's brought this, that we've been able to add to our community. We have a comprehensive 2040 plan that's going to direct our activities in Merriam for the next twenty years. Now, that's the future planning itself, things that we're going to be able to do. It's one of the things that he's accomplished during this timeframe. We've had numerous grants. We had a residential exterior grant program. We've had island grants. We've had residential sustainability grant. We have a historic downtown Merriam exterior grant. I mean, we even have a rebate for, well, what do we call it? Franchise fee rebate. All those, all things that's occurred since the mayor system took over at the helm of the city here itself. Yeah, I can't think, I mean, I know that one of the, probably one of the last biggest things that kind of affected me was in my department, is we saved the city of Merriam millions of dollars and also hundreds of thousands of dollars in Overland Park, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars with the merger of the Overland Park Fire Department and the Merriam Fire Department. Again, one of those things, thinking outside the box, that worked out best for both cities itself. So considering all those things that's occurred, we have chipped in and bought this really nice plaque. And you really deserve it, Mayor. I just wanted to say, and I'd like to read that. Appreciation. This certificate is awarded to Ken Sisom in appreciation of his valuable contributions as mayor and twelve years as a dedicated elected official of the city of Merriam and the community. We send it on behalf of the Merriam governing body, city staff, and the citizens of Merriam this twenty-fifth day of October, 2021. Okay, this is my best side. And we both went Shemish Nor, and his wife went Shemish Nor.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor.
I just want you and everybody all to know that this plaque has made it all worthwhile.
So that item ties in nicely with my staff item, which is the upcoming city council schedule. I think most council members have seen this before, but I wanted to share this. There will be, there'll be an interesting couple of months here as we transition from the current governing body to the next governing body. And just wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to look at this together. So on October 31st, Mayor Sisom will be resigning. At that point in time, per city code, Council President Bob Pape will become the mayor. And that automatically creates a vacancy in the Ward Four position and the council president position. With his, with him being the mayor, the election being the next day, on November 2nd, we would have the general election. We would know the results of those, we would assume by the canvas, which would be several days later. We will have a meeting on November 8th, a city council meeting. We will have to announce the vacancy that is created in Ward Four. That is per city code. There will be a thirty-day period for interested parties to put their name in the hat for the vacant Ward Four position. And also, the city council will elect a new city council president to serve until January. So we will need to fill, we will need to announce the vacancy in Ward Four, and then we will need to elect a council president, because both of those will be vacated with council president Pape being elevated to the mayor. November 22nd, we'll have a city council meeting, just business as usual. December 7th will be the deadline, the thirty-day deadline, for interested Ward Four candidates to submit their letters of interest. And then on December 13th, for a regular city council meeting, the new governing body will be sworn in. Immediately after the new governing body being sworn in, because we assume they will know what it is to be a good council member, we will ask them to select the Ward Four council member per city code, which will be an interview process. I think many folks, at least in the current governing body, have been through that process or at least have seen it. I think we might have several that have become council members through that process. So on December 13th, new governing body sworn in, and they will then start the interview and election process for that vacant Ward Four spot. We will cancel, as we normally do, our December 27th city council meeting. And then we will come back with the new council in January. Per code, they would, excuse me, they would need to elect a council president for a new two-year term. And that would, and per code, it just has to happen in January. So it can happen January 10th, or it can happen January 24th. But at one of the January meetings, the city council will elect a new council president. So there will be quite a bit of excitement going on over the next couple of months with the new council coming on board and getting them to select a new council member and then getting them ready to govern and continue all the good work that this governing body has done as governing bodies in the past. Happy to answer any questions about that. I don't know if there's anything that the city attorney has. We ran this through code, we ran this through statute, we ran this through everything. This is how it is.
Mr. Silver?
I just wanted to point one thing out. We just voted to cancel the December 26th city council meeting, but it says 27th up there.
Sure, that was for 2022.
Sorry. Yeah. Okay.
That'd be next year. Yes, sir.
Thank you for correcting.
Okay. I'll be happy to answer any questions. We'll make sure that we keep you informed and we inform the new governing body as we move through this process, so we can get ready to do the good work come after the first of the year. I have two other items, if there's no more questions about that. Actually, I have three other items. One on Wednesday, I think earlier someone had mentioned bike plan. We will be having, possibly our last bike committee meeting will be on Wednesday, where the final plan will be rolled out to the subcommittee. We have several folks in the audience and at the dais up here that are on that committee. When that is done, we will roll that out to council, share that with council, so they can see it. We will use that to inform how we do CIP projects as a reminder. We won't necessarily, at least it is not our intent, to jump off in the budget and start funding everything that's in there, but it is something that will inform us as we move through the years and we program the CIP. Likely, depending on the next governing body, likely it'll be one of those things, it'll be like the sidewalk program. We will have budget where when we go in, we could put, we could implement this piece or that piece, or some of the things, if there's geometric changes to streets, we would implement those, because they would have clearly a much more substantial price tag than just remarking streets. Another item will be, as a reminder, the Chamber Gala. The annual Chamber Gala is on Saturday, November 20th. The city sponsors a table. So we have eight seats available. Right now, we have Bob plus one, Whitney plus one, or maybe just Whitney. But please feel free to, it's a great event. We do have the seats available. Please feel free to reach out to myself or Jennifer if you have any questions about it. It is a great event, networking-wise with Chamber folks. Last item, I will be out Friday. Apologize for the lateness of that announcement, but my daughter won substate in volleyball, so she will be going to the state tournament in Salina on Friday. So I'll be taking off and be in the wonderful city of Salina on Friday. Happy to answer any questions.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right. I have a few final remarks before we conclude our meeting this evening. I want to first of all thank Bob Pape, not only for the plaque that I received, but for also making all the kind remarks that he made, because that keeps me from bringing them up during my final remarks and bragging about them, which wouldn't have been appropriate as I thought about that. So thank you.
Voice from the mayor.
Yeah. No, actually, all kidding aside, those things wouldn't have happened if this wasn't a cohesive group and we weren't heading in the same direction with a common goal. It wouldn't have happened without the staff to help us find our paths and for keeping us on the path and also to make it work once we decide what to do. This stuff wouldn't have happened. I feel very blessed to have been here for twelve-plus years. Never in my dreams, growing up, that I ever thought I would want to do this. In fact, a lot of people have asked me, why would you ever want to do this, even after I became mayor? And most of them were police chiefs. And I probably wouldn't want to be mayor anywhere else, but I really loved the city of Merriam. And I learned to love it as a police officer. I got opportunities galore. I enjoyed the work. I was paid for the job that I did, and I think I did it well. And I just thought that this was just one more way to pay the city back for all the years that I got as a police officer, is to become a mayor and try to make a difference here, too. That's always been my goal and no other goal than that. I want to thank my wife for all her support. She dressed me this evening, for example, which is actually not uncommon. That's pretty much the way it works, unless I insist on just wearing a polo. But without her support, I couldn't have made this happen either. So again, I want to thank you for your service, for putting up with me, and it's been my pleasure to work with you, and good luck in the future. Thanks again. And I guess I'll need to motion to adjourn. Please, a motion to adjourn, please.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded.
All in favor.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.